Welcome everyone to the Thursday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, meeting of Humboldt County Planning Commission. And as usual, I'll read the statement from the Governor's Office. In accordance with Executive Order N dash two-nine dash twenty, the Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually. Go to the county website. You can get direction as to how to join us by computer or by phone. And that's the easiest way to find out all that information. With that, I'll call the meeting to order. Would you please join me in a sweep to the flag?
States of America, to the Republic, our which is standing. A nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Alan Bongio.
Present.
Thomas Mulder.
Here.
Noah Levy.
Present.
Mike Newman.
Present.
Peggy O'Neil. Brian Mitchell. Melanie McCaver.
Here.
Welcome, everyone. Looks like we have a quorum, so it looks like we will have a meeting. Director, do you want me to attend to modifications?
Yes, there are a couple of things we'd like to do is for item number one, the Jeff Deal Conditional Use Permit, we'd like to have that continued. So we're gonna have to take that off consent and have a separate action on that. The other thing I'd like the Chair to consider doing is the General Plan Consistency Analysis, which is, I think, the last item on the agenda. Yeah, sorry, it's H one. If you would consider putting that onto the consent calendar, if there's no objections to that, that shouldn't be controversial, it's just making a consistency determination for some exchange of property between Lolita and the County of Humboldt.
Would it be okay with the Director if we dealt with that right up, asked that right up front and continued that other one before we do the consent?
That'd be absolutely fine.
Okay. Is there anybody who has any concern with putting item number H one, the General Plan Performance Review, on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will, we'll leave that off.
Chair Bongio, can I just make a quick comment on that? I know it has to do with Lolita, but I was reading through that, and I think it does note the issue with Save the Redwoods League and state parks picking up a lot of property. Is that the same agenda item, if I'm remembering? Oh, sorry, Director. My apologies.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that then? All right, we will leave that on the consent agenda. And then I would ask, the other part of it would be if we could move item number one, the Jeff Deal Conditional Use Permit, to a date uncertain. So I'd ask that we have a motion to move, to do those two things.
Oh, motion that we do those two previously mentioned titles.
Thank you, Melanie. Are you gonna do the second on that?
I'll second that.
Only discussion. Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Alan Bongio.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
Affirmative.
Melanie McCaver.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you on that. Housekeeping all the way. So that brings us to the consent agenda. And the second item, which is, and just go through it like always do. Anybody wants to pull it? Again, the first item on the, will be on the consent is the Salty Dog LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Densmore area. Does anybody care to have that item pulled?
You've got a hand up.
Have you? I've not seen it because my screen is disabled. It's a...
Seven four-two-nine.
Let me get to participants here. Okay. I see it now. So I will pull, pull this one.
I would check with them, make sure that that's what they're asking for.
Okay, can do that. Public seven-four-two-nine, are you out there?
No, we didn't do non-agenda items. That's probably what this is for.
You're right. You're right, I apologize. I skipped right past it. So are you there, seven-four-two-nine?
Yes, I am, and I may be calling at the wrong time. I was trying to call during public comment time.
Yeah, and we just realized that it's the Director, that I skipped over that, and I apologize, and we're gonna go right back to that right then. So with that, we're gonna pause on the consent agenda, and we're gonna go back to public comment. And this is the time when anybody can speak on any item that is not on the agenda. So I will, looks like we have...
Shall I go ahead? Shall I go ahead?
Yes, please.
Okay, well, good evening. My name's Robby Tenorio, and I'm calling into you tonight as a member of the newly formed Citizens for a Sustainable Humboldt. Citizens for a Sustainable Humboldt is, it's a new volunteer community organization that we've formed to help protect and enhance the quality of life and preserve natural resources in Humboldt County. And our main focus is going to be local land use decisions and the need for more sensibly planned development projects with fewer environmental and fire safety impacts and sustainable management of ground and surface waters as a public trust. So my comments tonight are not specifically on any one of the projects before you tonight, but my concerns are with the continued issuance of permits for projects with reliance on well water. This morning, there were five projects that used groundwater wells, and this evening, you're gonna be reviewing seven projects that rely on wells. And I'm sure they're probably all fine projects, but unfortunately, with no baseline of our groundwater, I don't feel you're able to properly analyze the impacts the pumping from these wells may have. And the real issue for us is that water is a finite resource, and we don't know, as of today, what is a sustainable amount that can be pumped out. And it doesn't seem that you have a system in place that will monitor the impacts on neighboring springs, creeks, and other surface water. Relying on the well drillers' opinions, our well logs is not an adequate way for determining hydrological connectivity. And by using those sources in lieu of hydrogeology professionals, the planning staff is acting in the capacity of a professional geologist. So we're asking for you to please require seasonal forbearance on wells as you require it on surface water diversions, and immediately, please begin a scientific analysis with licensed professionals to determine a baseline assessment of our groundwater, and then implement accurate monitoring systems with the goal of sustainable management of groundwater extraction. Also, there has to be an accounting of the total amount of water use permitted thus far, both surface and groundwater. And this information is required for permits, but we feel that you need to be working from a running total so that you'll be fully informed on the decisions that you make. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So any other speakers that would like to speak on public comment about anything that is not on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing no hands up. I will close the public comment. I apologize that I skipped over that. And we will move on to the consent agenda. And the first item on the consent agenda is item number two, the Salty Dog LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit. Is there anybody who cares to have this pulled? Seeing no hands, we'll leave that on consent. And we'll move to item number three, Martin Blue Ray Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Willow Creek area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this item pulled? Seeing none, leave this on consent. Item number four, Forever Honeydew Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Honeydew area. Is there anybody who cares to have this pulled? Seeing no hands, leave this on consent. Item number five, Top Choice Organics LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Alder Point area. Anybody who has concerns with this project? Seeing none, we'll leave it on consent. Item number six is Promethean Industries LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Bloxburg area. Anybody who has concerns with this project? Mike, I see you have your hand up. So is it just a simple question, or you want it pulled? You're muted.
Simple question.
Okay.
Why the larger nursery?
Would staff that has this one like to answer that? It would stay on consent if they can answer that question? That's, we're trying to keep things moving along.
I understand.
Through the Chair, this is item number six?
Yes.
The applicant is requesting a larger nursery size than ten percent. They provided a justification in their application for that request. The way the project is conditioned is, and the staff recommendation, is for the ten percent nursery size, and that upon approval would require revision of their operations plan and site plan for the ten percent nursery size. The applicant was advised they would need to pull their own project from consent if they wanted to take it up with the commission, and that previous applicants have not been successful with this argument. So we have made that clear to them.
So isn't it ten percent?
What, the project was noticed to put their, what they're asking for, but the staff recommendation is to limit it to ten percent.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great.
So you wanna leave it?
Leave it.
Not, okay, so unless anybody else wants it pulled, we're gonna leave it on consent. So seeing none, I will leave it on consent. We'll move to item number seven, Green Tech Industries LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Redway area. This is already...
That, that's a continuance, isn't it?
Right. So this one is already... Sorry, I missed that. Item number eight, Mermaid Spring Estate LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Redway area. Anybody concerned with this? Seeing none, we'll leave this on consent. Item number nine, Open Circle LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Redway area. Any concerns here? Seeing none, we'll leave this on consent.
Chair Bongio?
Yes.
I just had a quick question. What happens to the liquor license at that address if this is approved? I forgot to email that this morning.
They won't end up with the liquor license and cannabis license from the state on the same property.
That's what I thought. Thank you for that clarification.
Are you okay with it then, with that clarification? Okay. Anybody else have any concerns on this one? If not, we'll leave it on consent. Item number ten would be the next one, Humboldt Dankis LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit, Myers Flat area. Any issues with this one? Seeing none, we'll leave this on consent. Item number eleven, Emerald Dragonfly Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Carlott area. Any concerns? Okay, we'll leave this on consent. Item number twelve, which is Moser Properties Final Map Subdivision Extension in the McKinleyville area. Any concerns with this project? Seeing none, we'll stay on consent. Item number thirteen, which is Hand to Land Group LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Garberville area. Anybody care to have this one pulled? Seeing none, we'll leave that on consent. Item number fourteen, Top Camp LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Densmore area. Concerns on this one? Seeing none? That on consent. Item number fifteen, Mystic Mountain Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Bloxburg area. Any concerns? Seeing none, we'll leave that on consent. Item number sixteen, Kings Peak Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Garberville area. Anybody care to have this one pulled? Seeing none, we'll leave it on consent. And that brings us to, from second to the last, item, JMP Ranch LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Neeland area. Anybody have concern with that one? Seeing none, we will leave that on consent. And then we have item number H, which is the General Plan Performance Review, which we already approved, so it really doesn't have to be on the consent. So we have had seventeen items on the consent agenda, and one was pulled, and, and one was continued. So did I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm actually...
Chairman, I will...
Agenda?
Okay, we have a motion, and...
I will second the, that motion.
All right, so Melanie was the first, and Noah's the second. All right, any discussion? Mike? You're muted, Mike. You're muted.
My mouse working here. What was pulled?
Item one. Item one was pulled, and, and I can go to you.
Jeff Deal, CUP.
Yes, Jeff Deal. Okay, gotcha.
So we have motion to second. I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Alan Bongio.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Noah Levy. Noah?
Noah, you're muted.
You're doing the mic. Yes. Yes, I'm doing the mic.
All right, Mike, you're up next. Mike Newman.
Affirmative.
And Peggy O'Neil? I still have to call him, right? Melanie McCaver.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. So that takes us to item number... Public hearings, item number B, and the first one is Maple Creek Ranch for Conditional Use Permit and Zoning Clearance to get to the Corvail area. I'll take a staff report, please.
Chair?
Yes.
I'm gonna have to abstain from this one.
Okay.
So could you give me a call on my cellphone when it's over with?
Yes, I could. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, you kind of... Yeah, that's a good point, Mike. If you can hear me, which he's gone now, probably because you don't have to come back. Because this is the last item. This was the last item, so you wouldn't really have to come back.
Oh.
Everyone's still alcohol. All right, so we'll take a staff report on this, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name's Cliff Johnson. I'm gonna be presenting the Maple Creek Ranch project. I just wanna check that you can hear me. I know I've had some problems the last couple meetings.
Sound pretty good.
Okay. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. I do need screen sharing to be permitted.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So as I mentioned, this is an application entitled the Maple Creek Ranch Conditional Use Permit and Zoning Clearance. The application is a conditional use permit for four acres of new full-sun cannabis cultivation on an approximately four-hundred-and-twenty acre parcel. So they are taking advantage of the provision of the CMM L U O that allows for one acre of new cannabis for each one-hundred-acre increment of property for parcels that are over three-hundred-and-twenty acres in size. In addition, they are proposing to relocate twenty-seven-thousand square feet of full-sun outdoor cannabis from a parcel south of the property in the Maple Creek area, and that's at the direction of a previous border supervisor's decision. This was an application that was actually denied by the Planning Commission and went on appeal to the border supervisors. The outcome of that was that it was approved for relocation purposes. The proposed project, as I mentioned, is full-sun outdoor cannabis. They are proposing to plant it in the ground. There'd be a maximum of ten employees required. Power is proposed to be provided by a generator and solar power. It's not needed at all for the cultivation, but it would be needed for some of the ancillary propagation and the onsite processing, which is primarily going to be just drying and bucking. This shows the location of the Maple Creek Ranch site, just relative to central Humboldt. This is showing the location more specifically within Maple Creek. You can see the Maple Creek Ranch site to the north there, and then the retirement site, which, if you'll recall, was, was an application in front of the Planning Commission roughly six or eight months ago. This is showing the access to the Maple Creek Ranch site. The yellow is all public roads. The red is a proposed access drive on the property to the cultivation site. It's approximately two-and-a-half miles north of the intersection of Butler Valley Road and Maple Creek Road. This is showing the site plan. There's two primary areas for proposed development. The area in the center of the parcel is where the cannabis would be located, and also where the proposed new well would be installed. And then over where there's a little square, and maybe if you can kind of see my cursor there, is actually where the processing and the nursery are proposed, as well as a two-hundred-thousand-gallon rainwater catchment tank. This is a satellite image of the area. You can see the proposed cultivation area, the proposed well, and the nursery and processing area. The county circulated an initial study and mitigated negative declaration starting on February second of two thousand and twenty-one. We identified a number of mitigation measures to reduce impacts to less than significant level. That includes preconstruction surveys for special status amphibians and special status birds and raptors, a preconstruction survey for Howells Montio, which is a special status plant species, noise mitigation, the prohibition of rodenticides, and some mitigation to protect cultural resources. During the circulation of the secret document, we did have some concerns from a neighbor regarding groundwater sustainability, and that was primarily in relationship to the existing well. And the California Department of Fish and Wildlife expressed some concerns, the most notable being their concern regarding the adequacy of the botanical survey. And if you recall, this was, this item was in front of the Planning Commission on March eighteenth. CDFW did pull the item off the consent agenda, and there's a discussion relative to the adequacy of the botanical survey. County staff maintained that the survey was adequate for secret purposes. The applicant's biologist also had felt that they had done an adequate survey that would determine, and had been comfortable that there was no special status species in the project area. Subsequent to the March eighteenth hearing, the applicant did have their biologist go out and do a early season survey, and that survey did confirm the results of the previous survey that there is no special status species on the property that would be impacted. That was provided to you in a supplemental, I believe, this third, this Tuesday, that was sent to you. In that supplemental, you also did receive comments from the Friends of the Mad River, who asked that we enter into the record the entirety of a lawsuit that was filed recently against the county on a different project, notably the Rolling Meadows project. So that was provided in that supplemental. And it is staff's recommendation to adopt the mitigated negative declaration, adopt the resolution, which makes the findings for approval, and approve the Maple Creek Ranch project. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions for staff in the commission? Go ahead, Thomas.
So my only question, and I apologize for not emailing this in, it's in the CCLU O, section fifty-five-point-four-point-five-point-four, and it's the first section, fifty-five-point-four-point-five-point-four-point-one, where it states that no more than ten persons will have more than three acres of cultivation. So I was curious where we're at with that ten-person cap of over three acres, because I know there's a handful of more than three acres out there.
Certainly, through the Chair, if I could add, I know that we're not at that cap. That cap is related to the CCLU O, which is ordinance two-point-O. And so the applications that were approved under the first ordinance, and the Director will correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe they, they're not subject to that cap. So under the CCLU O, we've not approved very many. In fact, this would also not be one, because this is under the first ordinance.
All right, any other questions for staff? Go ahead, Noah.
Yeah, I, well, I may have other questions, but I, I just had an initial one, and it is to do with what Cliff just said. The staff report, as I recall, talks about, particularly with, you know, the power requirements of this project, talks about the portions of the project that are subject to ordinance one-point-O versus the portions that are subject to two-point-O. I just wondered, I just, you know, I think I understand what that's getting at, but for the sake of... but for the sake of clarity, could you explain more fully, uh, Cliff, how those two ordinances apply to this, um, project? Or perhaps I misunderstood?
Certainly, thank you. Um, through the chair, this application, uh, started out, well, on this property really started out as a four-acre application under the first ordinance, and it's been going through the process. Um, the zoning clearance certificate to locate the 27,000 square feet was always proposed for that other property on, uh, south, um, you know, just more close to the, uh, really the swimming hole in Maple Creek. And so, um, after that was denied and then appealed to the board supervisors, and I, and I should say that application was a 2.0 application. And so, that is being proposed to be relocated here, and that has to be reviewed under the 2.0. That's, uh, when that application was fired, filed. That, we did not believe that that would convert then the existing four-acre application into ordinance 2.0. So what we tried to do in the staff report is, is make that distinction. And I, I agree, it was a little tricky, so I don't know if we did that on, uh, as well as we could. But, um, you know, we, we tried to point out that the 27,000 square feet on its own does meet all of the 2.0 requirements, and that includes the energy requirements. So the, the, um, nursery and propagation and, and, uh, processing portions, all of that that's related to that 27,000 square feet is going to have to be provided by solar power only.
Thank you. And, and the ownership of the, what we'll call the south parcel or the original subject site and the current, uh, much larger site, that those are the same ownership? Is that correct?
That is correct. I think it's, it's possible they're under different LLCs, but it is the same family that controls both parcels.
Okay, well, thanks. That, that clarifies a couple of questions I had.
Anybody else have any questions for staff before we open this up for public comment? Seeing none, I will now open this up for public comment. See if we have anybody who cares to speak on this one. Seeing none? Anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment and bring it back to the commission. Any thoughts? Or do you want to make a motion on this? It seems to be pretty cut and dry.
Sure. I, uh, if, I, I don't want to get in front of any discussion, but, um, yeah, it seems like it's pretty quiet. I think, I think we've, we've looked at this one long enough in a couple of different forms, and it's been through the wringer with us and the supervisors, and now back to us. And, um, I, uh, let me just take a moment to move to the appropriate page. Um, yes, I would make a motion, uh, to adopt the mitigated negative declaration for the Maple Creek Ranch project pursuant to section 15074 of the state SEQA guidelines, make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permits and zoning clearance certificate, and approve the Maple Creek Ranch conditional use permit and zoning clearance certificate as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions.
I would second that, um, and share the same sentiments Commissioner Levy stated, because it was, you know, we hashed it out at the 18th, and then seeing that email thread of CDFW concerns mitigated, I kind of had the same sentiment and not any public comment, so thank you for making that motion.
Okay. If you, we have any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Melanie McCavver?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Um, so, thank you everybody on that one. And that brings us to, uh, item number H, which we put, uh, the first item, which was the County of Humboldt, will lead the community services district on the consent addenda. So that one is taken care of, and then the next item is information reports and the Humboldt County 2020 general plan and housing element annual progress report. Do you want to say?
I'd just like to say, um, Michael Richardson here is here to answer any questions. This is given to you as an informational item. It requires no action. It's really for the commission's information to see, uh, what we're filing with the state, what we've provided to the board of supervisors relative to two components. First is general plan implementation, and then progress with the housing element implementation.
Right, does anybody have any questions about this item?
Um, I would just ask the director, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Thomas.
Go ahead, Noah. Go ahead, Noah.
Oh. Well, I just thought, since it is, since we have the item up, uh, I just thought I'd ask the director if there were any points that he wanted to pull out of the summary, just to, uh, highlight for us and the public.
I'll highlight a couple that, that stand out to me, and then, um, ask Mr. Richardson to, um, maybe talk about some things that, uh, uh, he would want you to be aware of. I think the two big things that are there is progress in implementing the general plan. Obviously, we are a little slower in some areas than would be desired. Some of that has to do with litigation that was filed, and it's really stopped us from having the zoning maps, um, brought forward to the commission and to the board. Uh, secondarily is that we have been working on the community plan areas. Uh, we've been with a focus on McIlroyville Town Center. And, uh, we hope to have something for the planning commission to that end. I'm gonna say by mid to late summer and, uh, start having, uh, planning commission hearings on that. Relative to the housing element, you'll notice the number of housing starts and housing construction. And most of the housing starts and housing, or housing construction has been within the above moderate level. I think we've, um, recalling from memory now, I think we have like maybe seven or eight units that were within, uh, a lower income category. And so we are well behind our, uh, needed housing production to maintain, uh, pace with all the housing we need to provide for this particular housing element cycle. And obviously, that's not something that, uh, the county can snap its fingers and cause more housing to be produced. But, uh, we are working hard, uh, within the long-range planning team to try to find ways to, uh, instigate housing production, even if, uh, the county, uh, it partners with people to produce housing. Uh, ask Mr. Richardson if there's anything more he'd like to add.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, Michael Richardson here with the Planning Building Department. Um, the, one thing I would point to is the successful, um, pass, passage of the ballot measure. It was measure I. It's an affordable housing ballot measure, uh, that was voted in on, uh, November of last year, and that will dramatically increase the county's ability to directly fund and otherwise support, uh, affordable housing development in the county. Before, we were, uh, we had our hands tied behind our back because of state law, which requires jurisdictions to go through this process of getting a ballot measure approved so they can help develop affordable housing. It seems pretty backwards, but that, that's the lay of the land. It was a, a 1955, uh, state law that went into effect, uh, kind of tying our hands like that, tying all of the jurisdiction's hands. And, and the city of Eureka, city of Arcata have stepped up, and, uh, they, they've had, uh, these affordable housing ballot measures on the books, uh, in those cities for a long time. Uh, and the county finally, uh, put some energy and, and some muscle into this ballot measure, and, uh, it passed last year with, uh, 67% of the vote. So we, we've got a lot of support out there for developing affordable housing, and we've got a great team that is pushing forward, uh, changes to zoning ordinance to facilitate that, and, uh, and you'll be seeing that over the coming months and, and a few years.
All right, any questions for Michael?
That's all I have.
All right.
I have one.
Go ahead, Melanie.
Yeah, it's in regards to the, the housing. I was wondering if the director had any kind of estimate of the number of ADUs that have been, uh, put in or requested, or?
Off the top of my head, I don't recall. Michael, do you have that number?
Yeah, we, um, we permitted 23 ADUs last year, which is, uh, higher than normal. Normally, it's about 15. And, um, this is partly as a result of the new ADU ordinance that, um, the planning commission reviewed last year and the board approved. And we expect that number to increase.
You said 23?
That's correct.
Hmm, and are those, um, primarily in the urban areas of Eureka and Arcata? Are they more spread out?
The, no, the majority of them are in the urbanized areas. Probably 75 to 80% of the building permits that we permitted were in the urban areas. Although with the ADU ordinance, the planning commission and the board, uh, were concerned about the, the, uh, development of ADUs countywide. And so we included, um, some allowances for alternative owner-builder ADUs, which, uh, relaxes building code requirements in the, in the rural areas, those areas that aren't served by public water and sewer, uh, to allow for, um, side-by-side construction of, uh, alternative owner-builder, uh, primary and ADU units.
Hmm. And then, uh, my last question is in regards to this hotel idea that's been brought up by several bodies. Um, I was wondering if the county had any of those that were kind of seized, or? I'm, I'm not sure, just asking, uh, because I've been asked. Uh, there's several, I guess, abandoned or empty hotel units that could or could not be available for apartments.
Yeah, we, uh, we actually explored, uh, purchasing a hotel that was up for sale, is still up for sale in the Southern Humboldt area, uh, for the purpose of providing kind of transitional housing services. And, um, and, and we were just a little bit short. We had, uh, a million dollars we could throw at that project, and it required a million and two, and so it kind of fall, fell apart. But, uh, there is more funding coming from the feds, uh, in, in the coming years. And, uh, and so we, we're on the lookout for those, uh, those projects, because they, it's a win-win. You, uh, are taking these structures, these old hotels that falling into disrepair and putting them to, uh, a housing need. Um, and so, uh, we're very supportive of that, and we're looking hard at those opportunities.
Hmm, okay, thank you so much.
I'd like to follow up on that. I was gonna bring up the same subject, Melanie, and say that with all the, the way that, uh, Washington's spending money like drunken sailors, I think the county should be trying to get some of that so-called infrastructure money that is gonna be out there. Because there's, looks like there's gonna be plenty of it. Now, we're gonna pay for it? I have no idea, but, uh, another side note, um, for once, you won't hear me beating up on the county about not doing enough, because they've been doing their share. The problem is not the county right now that's keeping the costs so high. It's, uh, the cost of all the, the products to build your houses. Lumber is through the roof right now. You can't even, in my lifetime, I've never seen lumber jump the way it's jumped in the last year. It's 100% over what it was a year ago. And, um, go buy a sheet of half-inch plywood. It would have been 30 bucks. It's 60 bucks now. Depends where you get it, but it's crazy. So the cost is just phenomenal right now to build anything and getting products. And I think most of that's to do with COVID, but, uh, when you throw that term affordable housing out there, it does not exist. I always say that, and it's never been more true than right now. I'll shut up with that. Any other thoughts?
I, I will say one, uh, conversation I had with some folks at CR, they've got a program. They've, they've got a program where they are, uh, they have a class that puts together a tiny home, uh, every year. And those, uh, those homes, they, um, they cost, in terms of the materials, about $40,000 to, uh, pull together, and they're, uh, the home that they built, that their class built this last year is, um, on the market now, and the realtor is anticipating it'll sell for about, uh, 89,000 bucks.
Great. Thomas, I see you have your hand up?
Yes, uh, just a couple of comments on page 29. I grew up on the Avenue of the Giants, so I'm yearn-dear to, um, save the Redwoods Leagues and, uh, State Park. I, I do believe in preserving the forests, but there's been quite a few parcels that have been acquired over the last few decades that could fall into this affordable housing category. And unfortunately, they're pulled off the county tax rolls and also that potential for affordable housing in a lot of places that are very, very close to, uh, highways and, uh, quick access. The other thing that I, I see that there's a comment about the EIR, um, park management plan and EIR. Uh, State Parks does not manage their land. Uh, unfortunately, it becomes fire hazards, especially if it's been logged. At one point in time, you have this overgrowth of tan oaks and other brush that, um, make fire risks. If you look at all the towns along the Avenue of the Giants, they're just a big fuel break, or not fuel break, but feel all around. Um, and then my last question I have is, do ADUs fall into the category of considered affordable housing if, or does the county pay attention to what the rent is set at?
With, uh, with our, uh, annual progress report, we are making assumptions, uh, in what is determined to be affordable housing. And the, the bottom line is studio apartments are the only form of housing that is developed that isn't subsidized, developed by the private market, that is considered affordable housing.
So?
So, so an ADU that is a studio, uh, style setup would qualify as an affordable housing unit.
Okay, uh, because I'm just, I mean, I know quite a few people have seen that new policy in Southern Humboldt region and are pondering at it, but, you know, pondering at it, and then the new building costs going up, a lot of people are kind of on the sidelines. And that's, that's it for my comments.
Thank you, Phil. Anybody else have any comments? Well, this was just an informational item, so we don't have to take any action. That's the last item we have on our list. Is there anything else, Director, you want to talk about or anything?
I don't have anything right now.
All right. Um, so with that, I think we will be adjourned. And our next meeting will be a special meeting on April 22nd, and then the following May 6th. So I'll see everybody in another week or so.
Just, uh, can I actually just quickly?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, before we go, will we be, um, receiving a new staff report for the Arcata Land Company item?
So you probably couldn't hear that, but, uh, the, uh, planning commission secretary is madly working on producing that right now. So you probably couldn't hear that, but the planning commission secretary is madly working on producing that right now. It's on its way up.
Okay, thank you. We look forward to it.
All right, thank you, Noah. Well, everybody, have a great week, and we'll see you next meeting. Good night.
Thank you.
See you next week.